Five fifteen, thank you for everybody coming for the special meeting. First thing we'll do is call it order and Councilmember Atkinson, first time, will you lead us please?
Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Atkinson. For roll call, we have everybody here but Councilmember Hornby and he has an excused absence. So, at this time, we are going to point out in the back of the board, there's other, it'll flash on in a little bit here, but there's a QR code for committees to be on and it's been exciting because we have a lot of people filling out the applications even if we don't have anybody quite ready yet. We're not talking about the council member position, but just on other boards that we have. So, it's been a great positive impact. What we're going to do tonight is each candidate will have twenty minutes to provide responses for the questions listed. And the five questions were in advance and then the sixth question we provided during the interview. Each council member will ask one of the questions and then what we're going to do to, based on fairness, we're going to have each of you in a separate room and then we're going to have, we're just, we just did it by alphabetical order. So, it'll be Armando and Chelsea, Jessica and then Steve. So...
Can he hear us? Did we ever figure that out? Armando, can you hear us? Thumbs up or something? I don't think he... Has he...
Can we send him a text?
Send him a text. I think someone sent a text.
Computer locked up back here.
Ah. Alright, we'll give it a minute and see if we can get this to work. So, then how it's going to work is we're going to give you a notification like for the twenty minutes, we'll let you know, hey, you got ten minutes left. So, you kind of can time it and then five minutes before the twenty minutes is up. So, again, it takes a lot of courage and thank you so much for all of you to do this for our city and give back. That's the key. So, if Armando's on, then we'll have the other candidates in the other room. Is Armando on or...
He is on, I think, or just trying to manage the sound and the audio. So, we will give it two more minutes and then we could always...
Well, we'll have to switch it around.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't hear us, but he has to go first if no one else gets to listen.
Right, you're right. So, if you can't get him in two minutes, then we'll have somebody else start and we'll have to...
Does he have a phone? Get him on speakerphone or something?
On it.
Tim, turn your mic off. I'll turn mine on and try that.
Okay.
Can you hear us now? Can you hear us now, Armando?
It looks like somebody's mic is canceled.
Armando, can you hear us?
Now he needs to unmute himself.
He hasn't unmuted.
Yeah.
He's...
And there's an echo.
Alright, we can hear you now though.
Can you hear us, Armando?
Armando, can you hear us? Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Can we do my phone?
So, I think what we'll do at this time is we'll, since he can't hear anyhow, what we can do is start with the next candidate in the process, if that's okay, and then we'll try to get him on the actual phone. We may not have full video, but at least you guys will be able to hear his response.
I think you better do phone and out of fairness, then we need to have him be just...
If he muted this and stayed on this, he could call in and still be on this.
I think what we're having though is sound issues in terms of what the system is picking up because he has unmuted.
We can mute Teams and then he can call in the conference line and go through the phone line that way. I've done that before.
Okay, for right now, we do have, because we have one city council person that needs to be somewhere. So, we're going to have to, can you, so Chelsea. And, thank you. Lori, are you going to help him? Thank you.
Should I need to sit or stand?
I would have, I set up to sit, I guess. Twenty minutes.
And is her microphone on?
Testing.
Might be a little button.
Sounds like it's on. Got it? Great.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. Councilmember Cuevas, you can start us off.
Okay, Chelsea. My first question to you is, by the way, good evening.
Good evening.
What qualifications, unique skills or perspectives will you bring to the City Council?
Thank you. I believe that my experience is working closely with business owners, nonprofit leaders and community stakeholders has provided me a unique opportunity to understand a diverse set of perspectives. I'm a firm believer that collaboration is the key to success and I have harnessed that skillset for bringing people together to successfully create open dialogue in sometimes challenging situations. Should we pause?
Yeah, just pause. It won't count towards your time, Chelsea. We got to get this figured out.
Good? Okay.
So, Armando can't hear anything? Okay, we're good.
Great. Let's start where I left off. To successfully create open dialogue in sometimes challenging situations, I approach things with an inquisitive mindset to gain an understanding before jumping to conclusions and have an ability to see the big picture in order to make sound decisions on behalf of a collective group.
Thank you.
Okay, it's good to see you, Chelsea.
You as well.
What interests you about serving the community?
I have a long history of serving this community through volunteerism and it's my passion for serving the community that motivated me to take the role that I have at the chamber. I see now that these stepping stones have led me to serving in a greater capacity. I truly love this community and I want to be a part of protecting what we love so much while also guiding us into future growth. I'm really proud to live here and I'm proud to raise my kids here and I want to ensure that our future generations have that same amount of pride.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Chelsea, how would you balance the needs of District Two along with the needs of the community citywide?
Thank you. I believe that effective leaders have an ability to be the conduit between those that they serve and the overarching governing body, whether that is a staff and a board of directors or a committee member and an overall organization or elected officials who serve their constituents. My goal would be to understand the needs of my district through gathering input and feedback as well as understanding the strategic plan of the city and then helping to find a balance between both of those needs. I believe that it's important to also express the why behind decisions so that our constituents understand the big picture and feel like they are a part of the conversation. Again, with collaboration and strong partnerships being the key point.
Hi, Chelsea.
Hello.
Can you give us some examples of what inspires you and what motivates you?
Sure. I am inspired by the people in my life who have shown me what it's truly like to be a good leader, a sound advocate and how to harness each other's skillsets and personalities to work collectively. I am motivated by the opportunity to make a lasting impact on people's lives. I have a servant's heart and nothing makes me happier than helping others. I am also inspired and very much motivated by the dreamers in our community, the people who are thinking outside the box and creating such incredible opportunities for our future while also protecting the things that we love most, just for a few.
Thank you, Chelsea. What changes would you like to see for Wenatchee and how would you help attain that vision?
Thank you. When I think of some of our biggest challenges like workforce and housing and understanding that these are not only challenges here for us, but statewide, nationwide, I want to focus on what our key priorities should be in helping to fill those gaps here directly in our community. How do we support those in our community doing that work? What resources are available not only here but outside of our community? To ensure the need, we need a good understanding of what the needs are and what is currently being done and what barriers are standing in the way. Secondly, I would like to see us provide a more supportive environment for our business owners, particularly our new business owners. To do that, we need to get a clear understanding of the challenges that they are facing and what they feel could be done to make the process a bit smoother and less costly. The best way to gather that feedback, I believe, would be through a focus group or groups so that we can gather firsthand knowledge from those business owners. Not only would that help us with our long-term goal of improving our processes, but it would also show that we want to be a partner in their journey and not a barrier. This will help build trust and create a more supportive environment for constructive conversations and results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next question. We must be doing well with time, right, Tammy?
I told you I'm a fast talker. Sorry.
When a sensitive matter comes before the council, how would you go about making a decision on how to vote?
A sensitive situation? Well, I think first it's important to remove emotions from a decision. So, I think that getting down to the nuts and bolts of what the issue is, removing your emotions and discussing as a council the pros and the cons and then coming to a collective decision that we feel would make the best move for that issue and for the community as a whole.
Thank you. You have a couple extra minutes if you'd like to...
Just a few.
Any other concluding comments?
I just wanted to thank you guys for your service and your dedication to our community. I think that it's incredible, the work that you do and I'm just really honored to be here today and have this opportunity to be in front of you. I'm confident that my skillset and knowledge would really be a great addition to the council and I would be honored to serve alongside each and every one of you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
So, do we think we have our IT figured out?
We're going to take the next candidate while we continue to...
Okay.
So, the next candidate would be Jessica Johnson, so I will go grab her.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh. He can, does he have the Teams app loaded? So, he can actually call the United States number from Teams?
Welcome to Meeting Center. Please enter your access code. Please wait for the conference to begin. Thank you.
Jessica, you don't have to do any slow dancing. That's what it sounds like the music's playing.
I was wondering about that. I wasn't in the application process, so...
It's our elevator music.
Yes, that's fine.
So, just bear with us.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Can we get... Okay, so we'll give it another, we have Jessica here now, so can we get the elevator music off, Tim? Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Cuevas, first question.
Jessica, good evening.
Hi.
What qualifications, unique skills or perspectives will you bring to the City Council?
Well, I consider myself an open-minded person that has many interests and lots of different things, but what I'm most well-versed in is nonprofit management skills. I have, I was an executive director. I also have called myself a nonprofit baby because that's the only sector that I've worked in since I started my professional career. So, I have extensive experience in expanding nonprofit organization reach and impact. I have developed several programs that have gone on to be successful. I'm familiar with strategic planning and leading it and also being a part of it. I've sat on many boards as well as done board development and governance. I'm well-versed in the needs of the community as my position at Sage when I, before I ended my position there. It gave me a really unique way of being able to perceive the community and see all the needs that are very apparent in our community. I also have experience working with homeless and at-risk populations. Of course, running grants and budgets experience as well. I have good relationships in the community with stakeholders and I also have, I enjoy advocating for underrepresented groups. So, that means the people that often aren't the ones that are coming to the table and have a voice. So, I have great advocacy skills in that and I have good relationships with both our state and our federal representatives in the Congress and legislative, sorry, I can't talk apparently.
Thank you.
It's okay. Welcome. Jessica, what interests you about serving the community?
Well, as being in the nonprofit industry as long as I have, I've always been interested in serving and bettering the community. And so, in the position that I am currently, I am involved as the associate director as of the, okay, again, associate director of the Children's Advocacy Centers of Washington. And so, it's much more at a higher state level than it was at the community level. And so, I'd like to get back to being able to serve the community better in that way. I kind of miss my people. I miss being able to see them. I miss being able to talk to them. I miss being able to be involved with the community. And at the level I'm at, I'm still involved in the state level, state discussions and things like that. But I work almost exclusively from home, so that gets a little bit lonely as well. So, I'm looking forward to being able to be back out in the community and back out making a difference to continue the service that I've done before. And really, I just want to make a lives, a difference in the lives of others. I have, I have been the voice for crime victims before. I have been the voice for homeless populations before and at risks, for domestic violence, for sexual assault, for child abuse and neglect. I think all of those people, we know it happens here in our valley unfortunately, and I think all of those people need to have a voice in our community, so...
He is now joining.
You're finally...
Okay.
Just a pause, we're not counting the time or anything, so...
Okay.
No, we need to make sure he can't hear.
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, that's not...
That's okay.
Thank you.
And also, I, you know, just growing up, my mom was a city councilperson for as long as I can remember in the little town of Brewster where I grew up in Oakenalken County. And my dad was an orchardist there as well. And so, when our mayor at that point in time stepped down, everybody kind of took a step back and my mom ended up to be the mayor of Brewster. So, I've always kind of had that background and interest in what, on how to serve your community better and being, being somebody who contributes.
Thank you.
Jessica, how would you balance the needs of District Two along with the needs of the community citywide?
It's a great question. It's one that I thought about a lot. It is something that I think that it's important that you listen to the people that, who are in your district and address their concerns, but I also think it's really important that while you're addressing their concerns and you're keeping those in mind, that it's important that you also bring an open mind to the council and being willing to work for the city at large as a whole. I really think that, you know, that I feel that with an open mind that you can accomplish both, that you can be able to address the needs of the people that are living in your district but also being able to address the needs of the city at whole. I think that this is important because your ability to balance those two really will, in the long run, be the best for the city.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Can you give us some examples of what inspires and what motivates you?
Sure, the list is long. I'm kidding, I won't bore you guys on that one. But I really, I know that I keep coming back to saying I want to make a lasting difference or that I want to make a difference in our community. But, and also that I've said that I want to make a difference for the people who may not have an opportunity to have a voice at the table. I think it's really important for people, no matter where they are in their lives, that they have access to be able to tell people what they need. Obviously, the council is probably not going to be able to address all the needs of all the people in the city of Wenatchee, but I think that it's very important that they are heard. And that motivates me to be able to want to be a part of the people making a difference and at least to hear the people and what they have to say. A lot of times, people just want to be heard and they just want to be validated that you heard their concern and I think that that's really important. And so, that motivates me. I also, it also motivates me to think about the legacy that I want to leave or that we want to leave as a whole for our children and our grandchildren. I'm a new grandma, well, a year-old grandma, I guess you can call me, of twin baby girls and so, that has been a huge change for me. But also seeing like what they have to look forward to in their future and what they have to, to, all the possibilities that they might see in their lifetime that I won't see in my lifetime. And that motivates me to be, want to make, make sure that the communities that they live in, the communities that we all are a part of, still continue to grow and thrive. I really, I really feel like that's an important thing to leave behind as a legacy as well. And also for my kids too, I mean, I want them to be able to live healthy and productive lives and so that motivates me as well. And then, I would also say that my experiences in my life have motivated me to want to always grow and learn. Part of the reason why I worked for Sage is because I happen to be a survivor of domestic violence. I mean, that's not my whole experience or my whole life experience, but I think it's really important to know that people live in this wonderful valley and they have experienced several different things that some people don't and are lucky enough not to. But I think that it's important for those people to be able to feel like that they're, like I said before, like they're heard. But also, that I want to be able to make sure that I continue to grow and learn. I consider myself to be a lifelong learner and I don't feel like my job is ever done with learning. I think that that's something that I want to continue to do until I'm no longer able to do it and that really motivates me as well.
My turn, Jessica.
Okay.
What changes would you like to see for Wenatchee and how would you help attain that vision?
Well, I think there are a lot of people out in Wenatchee that would like to become involved in the community more and in the city more as well. I know there are various boards and other things that people can volunteer to be on. And I would like to see that, that they were able to achieve those goals and be able to be more involved in the city, whatever that is. That might be a volunteer night that we have, like National Night Out, that they come and they volunteer at the event. Or it could be that maybe there's somebody out there who has got mad skills with social media and, thank you, has mad skills with social media and would do a great, be able to do a great job with managing social media or helping with ideas behind that. I think that our community itself has a lot of people that have a wealth of knowledge and that being able to get those people who are willing to help us, to be able to help us would be a wonderful thing for the city as well. I want to see that Wenatchee continues to be a beautiful and wonderful place to live and addressing the issues as they arise and having an open mind about different ways to get there will hopefully help me accomplish that as well. I know that the city is ever-changing and ever-growing and as it does that, special issues arise and they need to be addressed. And so, I think that it's really important that you just have an open mind to be able to, to be able to address those and not just have, not have a personal agenda really. I mean, to be able to be open and willing to help and work as a team as part of that. And probably the last thing I would say is that I would like to see that the valley continue to grow and thrive. And I know that, you know, that that might be wider than just the city, but I think that it's important to also take a look at that in the lens of what you're going to do in the city as well because the greater community is important to us and we also need their support for the things that we hope to do in the future. And so, I'm hopeful that, that I'm able to do that even if I'm not on the city council by being able to be involved in the community and being able to help move this wonderful place that we live on forward so it continues to grow and thrive.
Thank you. Okay, is this the surprise question?
Yeah.
When a sensitive matter comes before the council, how would you go about making a decision on how to vote?
Well, I am familiar with lots of sensitive matters that have come before me in my career and things in personal life and things like that. I think that the most important thing is to have an open mind but also be able to review both sides of what's happening. So, whether that is, you know, taking a moment or taking several moments, as the case might be, to look at one side of the argument about, you know, why this would be great or good and why it wouldn't be great or good. And to really examine and to make, I like to make like a list, a pros and cons list and really examine that. I would also rely on the council itself to hopefully have some great conversation around what we're discussing to make sure that we are taking into consideration what the city actually needs to do. So, I know that my vote is mine singularly as myself, as that position, but I also think that relying on the other council people is important to make sure that you're seeing all sides of the story before you make a decision.
Thank you. Last question for you. You can take any other remaining time you have to make any concluding comments.
Well, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to come here tonight and be interviewed for this position. I really appreciate the opportunity. I really think that this is a wonderful opportunity for anybody and would be honored if I was the person that you chose, but totally understand if I'm not the person that you choose as well. I just would like to be a part of the city council and to help our city grow and improve and be the, I was going to sound like I'm recruiting for the military, but be the best that it can be in all ways that it can be. And I, I think that the city is really on a great trajectory right at the moment and I just envision seeing it to be more and to continue to grow, so, yeah, that's...
Thank you so much, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jessica.
So, where are we at with Armando?
We will bring Steve Maher up next just to continue and not be distracted.
Continue the flow, sure, that sounds great. Okay, we need that music back. Councilmember Cuevas is gonna start you off with the first question.
Good evening, Steve. What qualifications, unique skills or perspectives will you bring to the city council?
First of all, thank you for having me tonight. I'm very grateful and honored to have this opportunity. I have a great deal of love for this community and the city. It's been very good to me over the years and if chosen, I'm eager to get to work and help you all. I think maybe the biggest thing is I've had my ear to the ground in this community for a long time. I have a deep understanding of what city residents value about this place, what they see as, you know, our, our big challenges, what they say will remedy those challenges, prove the quality of life for everybody, empower people, and then also, you know, envisioning our own long-term future here. That knowledge base has come from not only my work with Our Valley, Our Future, but also my years with the Wenatchee world and my involvement with numerous government committees, nonprofit groups and community groups, including efforts that have, I think, definitely benefited our economic development here, our downtown, the arts, tourism, outdoor recreation, health and wellness, and also our Latino community. One of the great benefits of working as a journalist is you get to know tons of people from all walks of life, learning about their experiences. And as a result, plus everything else I've done, I consider myself well-rounded, observant, perceptive. I would say I'm a little bit of a data geek. I like to look at data quite a bit. And definitely action-oriented and knowing all those people, I think, again, I value the richness of this place and all the different voices we have. One of our community core values here is that people care about whether we as people and organizations work together. And they really do care and when it doesn't happen, they don't like it. And I think that's one of the great things about living in this place. You know, I don't know if that's because of the size of the community, the history, but it definitely exists here. So I truly believe, and I felt this way for a long time, I believe in community collaboration that engages with, listens to many voices, brings as many people to the table as possible, empowers them, you know, forges their roles and, you know, kind of moving forward. I liken it to everybody rowing in the, you know, in the same direction as well as everyone agreeing to what that direction is. And I think that's really important. I have, again, a good grasp of many of our community challenges. I know quite a bit about a lot of different things. I gotta tell you, one of my favorite things is, what I do when I go out and travel is I like to find communities that are like Wenatchee's size and actually see what they have that we don't and bring those ideas back. Regarding housing, I facilitated the Shalan Douglas Housing Solutions Group, which is guiding the OVOF Housing Initiative since 2019. That includes City of Wenatchee and City of East Wenatchee employees. More recently, we've had government planners from Shalan, Indiott, Rock Island, Kashmir, Leavenworth, I think that's it, have joined the group. I've served on the city lodging tax advisory committee for a number of years. Done the same for Shalan County. I'm still on the Shalan County LTAC. And interestingly, when I first became a reporter here, I covered Wenatchee City Hall. And the mayors were Earl Tilly and Dennis Johnson. So again, I guess, I think my expertise, skills and knowledge really can help the city navigate many of the challenges you guys are facing.
Thank you.
Good evening. What interest you, excuse me, what interests you about serving the community?
You know, I feel very strongly about helping others, making things better. I think I'm a community builder at heart and when I say that, I mean, building community from all aspects, all parts of the community. I've devoted much of my life to public service. I, I view journalism as a public service in one form or another and I credit that actually to my family and our roots. My dad was a state legislator from Oregon in the sixties and seventies. And believe it or not, he was both a Republican and a Democrat. I'm not sure how he did that, but he did. My grandfather was police chief of Portland in the early nineteen hundreds. And yes, he wore a derby hat and had a handlebar mustache. We saw photos of him. And my niece, my niece right now, one of my nieces is Seattle Mayor Bruce Harrell's, one of his key staff members. I think this is a really interesting time to serve the community because I see our economy, our population, everything in transformation right now. I think we are changing. Wenatchee is not the same place it was ten or twenty years ago. And based on, you know, all the trends you see, based on what we have here, the influx we saw during the pandemic, and there was definitely more people who moved here than moved out, I don't think that's gonna dissipate anytime soon. I think we're gonna continue to see that. So again, I've witnessed this place over a number of years, change, grow, sometimes struggle, but over and over, over the long term, definitely improve. And I believe the potential for us to collectively move forward as one community to take these challenges on is squarely in front of us. And I think we can totally do that. And that, excuse me, that, that really excites me to see, to see that potential. Same time, it is clear to me, you know, there's a lot of challenges, big challenges, and I don't need to go through all of them, homelessness, housing, you know, the reemergence of gang activity, need for infrastructure, you know, declining school enrollment, there's a lot of things going on. So again, I'm really eager to help the city work with those challenges, also fill in gaps in other areas that I think there's potential to do that and, you know, move forward.
Thank you.
How would you balance the needs of District Two along with the needs of the community, City What?
That's a good question. I struggled with this question a little bit. I took a glance at Census Bureau data down to the block level, you know, I was curious whether my own experiences of living in District Two, I live up by the hospital, matches the data and it, and it truly does. It's a very diverse district in terms of everything from income levels, household size, ethnicity, education levels. It's also interesting because when you think about it, you know, we have, in that district, there's a lot of, what I would say, pretty quiet neighborhoods. But at the same time, there's also these really bustling areas, right? We got Wenatchee High School, we got Confluence Health, we got Pioneer Middle School, Pioneer Park, Triangle Park. There's a lot of stuff going on. We also have, I think, three or four assisted living facilities, you know, so it's a really interesting district. What we don't have frankly is a neighborhood market or a neighborhood coffee shop, which I personally would love to see because I drink a lot of coffee. And, you know, and there's some other districts in the city like that too, and I know there's a lot behind that, but that would be a great thing. And so while District Two, I think, has some characteristics that, you know, make it stand apart, I think in overall, there's way more in common with the rest of the city than there, than there's not. In terms of how I would balance the needs of District Two and the city overall, I think first of all, you know, what residents in District Two need would, would be very important to me. You know, it's my district. It also kind of goes back to what I was saying a moment ago about the need to collaborate, to hear all voices, you know, to bring people to the table. So certainly I would advocate for their needs, but it would come down, you know, to the importance. You know, does the city, is it in the city's goals? Is there resources for whatever this need is? And also, is there some other organization that could perhaps work on that need? I can offer you a real quick theoretical. I live on, again, Upper Monroe Street, corner of Stevens. We frequently have cars speeding, kind of that north-south streets, like between Miller Street in Okanagan and from Red Apple down to Ferry, Millardale, I don't, I think it's Ferry Street there. If residents came to me and said, hey, you know, we need roundabouts or we need more traffic enforcement, I'd certainly talk to you all about that, talk to the city. But again, it would come down, I think, you know, do we have the resources? Do we have the ability to do it as a part of the city plan? I think it's very important for the city to work as a team, communicate and, you know, look, I think primarily as the, for, you know, in terms of the city as a whole, you know, focusing on that. Yep. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Can you give us some examples of what inspires you and what motivates you?
So again, I'm really inspired by people helping others, making things life better for all and the residual effect that can come from that and how it can impact an entire community. One thing, and I, you know, a lot of folks in this community don't know this, but a great example is the relationship building that occurred during the pandemic, including between cultures. I think it's one of the great silver linings, you know, we, there was a lot, a lot of good stuff happened during the pandemic, but I think that is one of them. I don't think, again, a lot of our residents know this, you know, it was mostly out of sight, never really reported on. But I saw and participated in a lot of those activities firsthand, so I, I know they occurred. And the great news is a lot of those relationships that were formed during this horrible time continue today and, and they have led to greater collaboration in this community. And we're beginning to see the connective, from that connectiveness manifest itself in things like the community foundations, you know, they're gonna be launching this new civic leadership program in this community, I believe at Wenatchee Valley College, you know. Those things, and I, and I've been part of that group, so I, I know this, you know, a lot of that was because of these people who got to know each other and built relationships during the pandemic. Another example is the Shalan Douglas Land Trust Foothills Campaign. That was about ten, twelve years ago. I was the community coord-
What's that, Tim?
I was the-
Ten minutes, okay.
Community coordinator for that effort. I wasn't out raising money. Somebody else did that, but I basically, you know, communicated and promoted the campaign. And there were literally hundreds and hundreds of people that participated in that in one form or another, whether they gave money or helped out. I remember we held this thing called Hands Across the Foothills where we bussed, I don't know, seven, eight hundred people up to the trailhead and everybody linked hands from the base of the saddle rock all the way to the top, you know, just to call attention to the project. And you can see what that effort has led to today. We've got this amazing Wenatchee foothills trail system, seven trailheads. And it has helped our economy here, it's helped our wellness level. And, and I can guarantee you, again, I've done a lot of traveling in my life. There are probably hundreds and hundreds of communities around the country that would literally die for what we have here. It's a huge asset. And so again, that's an effort where people came together to help others and it manifested or, yeah, manifested itself to something even bigger. Then finally, I want to bring up the work of our police officers has inspired me. I occasionally listen to the police scanner. You probably think I'm really bored doing that, but I, I do occasionally. And while I'm not at the scene of these calls, obviously I've been very impressed by how officers have acted, particularly when it comes to interacting with our homeless folks. I attended a recent law enforcement forum down at Pibus and Chief Crown and Sheriff Morrison and Sheriff Morris, I think it is, from Douglas County, talked about how police work has changed to its, where it's become increasingly protecting the vulnerable. And on the scanner, I have heard the voices of these officers dealing with what I can only imagine is just these horrible human conditions and going into places, you know, late at night under bridges and stuff. And I've, and I've heard them, you know, communicate with Rivercom as they determine their best, best course of action. And again, you know, I'm listening, I'm not there, but, you know, from my standpoint, our humanity, humanity professionalism in doing things they probably never thought they would ever do, you know, at least some of them. And then again, this is totally unseen, like the general public, I don't think knows this is happening. That really, really inspires me.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hi, Steve. Glad you could make it here tonight.
Thank you.
So what changes would you like to see for Wenatchee and how would you help attain that vision?
You know, again, I don't, I don't know, you know, everything that city has planned or you're working on or, you know, some things that may not be out of your control that you can't really do. And so if I misspeak here, I apologize in advance, but I think there are two things, two changes that I would like to see from my standpoint and what I know. And one is a more regional, more regional approach to the housing situation here. And, and secondly, more outreach and conversations with residents. Regarding the housing, you know, I've worked with several of your cities' community development planners. I think they're doing amazing work, but in a lot of ways, their hands are tied. You know, the city is landlocked in terms of the hills we have and, you know, the boundaries and all that and the river. They also deal, you know, with these market forces that nobody has really any control over here. We aren't totally there yet, but I do worry about Wenatchee becoming a place where only those with, you know, with the means who are financially in a good place could, could live. And, you know, and I think the impact of something like that, I think, would be immense. Everything from social cohesion to, you know, businesses not having access to our, our workforce and what that would do to the economy here. You know, we're seeing that in Leavenworth and Shalan right now. They're grappling with this. I just finished about a year and a half project for Bend, Oregon. They, they did something very similar to what Our Valley, Our Future has done here. And the average median home price down in Bend, Oregon is about eight hundred and fifty thousand today. And it's a tourism place, right? And there's a lot of service workers. Okay. People who are working in the, they're now living in Madras and Prineville, which is fifty miles away. And they can't live in Bend, they can't afford it. And, and the public transit system down there is not very good. And so you go down there and if you're there on a Tuesday and Wednesday, your restaurant probably will not be open. And so I worry about that here. The state has instructed jurisdictions to plan and accommodate in Shalan and Douglas for seventeen new, seventeen thousand new homes over the next twenty years. And that's based on median, median population growth, most of those being for households that earn eighty percent of the area median income. So I wonder, you know, where are those homes gonna go? Who's going to build them? Given all this and the fact we essentially live in one community here in the greater Wenatchee area, I think it may be time for a closer look at a regional approach. And I don't know exactly what that might be, but I think it's time for that. I believe community members want to see that. I think it would help in securing state and federal grants for infrastructure tied to housing. But it's also a big, huge animal, you know, to take on and it would take some, I think, tough conversations and compromises. Secondly, I think there's a big need here for local governments, nonprofits, everybody to communicate more effectively, given the decline of traditional media and all the amount of information floating around. How do we keep our residents informed and engaged? I was down in Yafreeda last week to do a presentation before city folks, school superintendent, PUD, hospital folks, and they are struggling right now because their newspaper of some one hundred years has shut down. And they don't even know what's going on in their town now because they, there's no information source. I think communicate, communicating effectively also means doing so in more than one language so that all residents have equal access to information that will keep them informed, allow them to more readily assess amenities and services and be able to more fully participate in civic life. The Census Bureau, I think, says we've got twenty-seven percent of our residents here speak Spanish at home. And as I mentioned earlier, this place cares whether we as people and organizations work together, but I don't think, I'm not faulting anybody, but I don't think we've always heard all voices. That said, you know, change is seldom easy, but I'm very optimistic about this place because I've lived here and I've seen what we've been able to accomplish here over a period of years. And if you go back through our history, you know, going back decades, we have this tradition, history, maybe it's in our DNA of rolling up our sleeves and working together and getting things done.
Thank you.
Yep.
When a sensitive matter comes before the council, how would you go about making a decision on how to vote?
You know, I guess it, it would depend on what it is, you know, is it, is it, if there's a conflict involved. I'm not sure if that's what you mean, you know, I have a long history of knowing about conflict of interest and how to avoid those things. And, you know, and it's, I mean, I was trained that way as a journalist and it's continued to this day. So I'm not sure if that's what you mean or when you say sensitive.
To be fair, I just have to read the question.
Okay, okay, okay. I don't know, you know, I think, I think talking with folks, you know, determining, I think, conversation goes a long ways, communicating. You know, I would certainly not disclose that. My journalism days are behind me and I think in my role now with Our Valley, Our Future, you'd find that I've, I've kept things quiet when needed. I'm not sure if that's what you mean too, but.
Any other concluding comments for us?
No, other than, again, thank you for the opportunity and I truly respect what you guys are doing, what the city does. I think the city, you know, again, not privy to everything, but I think the city is well-run. I think it's very professional, has high standards, and I've seen that happen over a number of years. And so, you know, I really want to serve as a council member, but I understand also you've got some really other great candidates. And so all I can say is I wish you the best in this decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, can we take a five-minute break so we can get this organized and then we'll go ahead and, we have a backup, but we want to just test it and make sure we're running. make sure we're running before we-
Perfect.
Get them on, okay.
Marissa, not that way, I can hear your voice clearly.
Okay. So question number one, we'll go ahead and get started. Question number one is what qualifications, unique skills or perspectives would you bring to the city council?
Yes, so I've lived 30 years in the valley, the last 14 in District Two. I'm a son of two Mexican immigrants. I'm bicultural and bilingual in English. I come from an accounting background. I have seven years of experience working on taxes and it provided me kind of a unique perspective and understanding of our tax code, financial statements, tax incentives. I've worked with different sized budgets. Additionally, I worked at, we're Washington State Department of Revenue, the state auditor. Did over 100 audits in my time there. I worked with a lot of mom and pop businesses, two larger corporations. Some audits I started, you know, doing on their, doing them at their dining room table. So I understand, you know, some of the unique challenges based on their side. I was also part of a team that audited the state of Texas, one of the largest states in the country. I spent six months in Austin and, you know, got great experience. I also now, now I kind of put all that together and work at Weinstein Beverage, kind of piecing it all together. I also have a real estate background. It's something I'm passionate about. I'm a licensed agent in the valley. Possess some of the skills in like drafting, reviewing multiple contracts, purchasing sale agreements. So I always kind of have a current pulse on the city's housing market. I've also worked with Tom Mees. Initially, I helped him file his 501(c)(3) status for Common Ground, the organization that focused on providing affordable housing in the city. And then I have a personal understanding of housing issues. Haven't been close to experiencing homelessness a few times growing up. A kid, my family lived paycheck to paycheck. And unfortunately, I don't have the luxury of having to travel at home. We were always moving from apartment to apartment. And I understand firsthand what some of our residents go through in the valley. So it's a deeply personal matter to me. And I'm, you know, eager to work with fellow council members to address some of these large issues. It's also one of the reasons I became an agent in the first place. Helped my family and a lot of first-time home buyers in our city.
Great, thank you. Question number two is what interests you about serving the community?
Yes, so I've personally witnessed, you know, the transformative impact some individuals can have on others' future. What I mean by that is like small acts of service can go such a long way. If it weren't for some of the members, community members in Wenatchee, my family really wouldn't be here today. For example, there was community members that helped us with upfront rent costs, like the first and last month rent or deposit. Actually, I went to St. Joe's Elementary School, where actually Mike, your wife, was my kindergarten teacher, actually. She was the person who taught me English because growing up, we spoke Spanish. So there was people that would help us with tuition. So I appreciate all these little small acts of service. I bet you, like, some of the people probably don't even remember how big of an impact they had on me. I also serve as a treasurer for volunteer attorneys' services. I saw firsthand how the great impact my skills had on me. I'm growing this nonprofit and I would like to continue to bring my unique skills and experiences at a citywide level. I may not be able to support nonprofits financially in big ways at this point in my career, but I do have professional experiences and lived experiences that make sense to the city as it continues to govern and we welcome newcomers.
Great, thank you. Question three is how would you balance the needs of District Two along with the needs of the community citywide?
Yes, so like I said, the last 14 years I've been a resident of District Two, I understand the unique challenges we face, such as a lot of issues with like traffic, speeding, accidents. I actually live on the corner, a very busy corner, on the corner of Miller and Millardale. So I firsthand hear, listen, so all sorts of issues constantly going on. I tend to balance these challenges by actively, you know, participating in community forums, maintaining, while maintaining my involvement for what I currently serve on. I also have family members, friends that work and live in other districts. So I'm pretty familiar with what issues they face. I will bring a voice to the area I live in while really recognizing the responsibility of council members to represent the community as a whole. You know, for every decision that seems like it could be focused on one district, I will consider the broader impact of the community and asking myself, you know, who stands to gain and who may seem like, who may seem to lead in situations.
Thank you. Question four is can you give us an example of what inspires and motivates you?
My parents. My parents, being sons of immigrants, I've worked, I've witnessed their hard work across all various sectors, agricultural, retail. My mom owns a cleaning business. They really sacrificed everything to provide for my siblings and I to have a safe life. They inspired me to work hard even when it seemed impossible to move forward. Additionally, I was fortunate enough to work with, you know, Frank and Michelle St. Dennis, owners of Tidings Beach Resort, for years. They were generously enough to be flexible and work around my schedule while I attended college. It was because of them that I was able to pay for my entire college education. On every other weekend, I would come home and work with them Thursday night, you know, all day Friday, Saturday, and then drive back, work Sunday after my shift. I was, I was determined to not hit a job in Spokane. I really admitted to me to come to work like over the summers, the winter, spring break. So their, their small, like, actions and just being really, being able to work with me, like, went along with, made me cry on the day. So I'm motivated to that, but to help other families, you know. Yeah, I'm basically, I'd like to do the same for other families.
Thank you. Question five is what changes would you like to see for Wenatchee? And how would you help attain that vision?
I would like to see Wenatchee be a place where its residents are more involved in their city and local government. I feel like when, when you're involved in a community, you have like a sense of belonging. They have, they feel like their voices are heard. I especially want to focus on, you know, the next generation of young professionals, Latinos and immigrant families. I believe I can help, I can help them by encouraging them and personally invite them to participate on maybe one of the city's advisory boards, you know, in the future with some training that can probably serve as a resource to these individuals so that they, so that they spend more time on these boards. I would also like to encourage people to have, continue to, continue to participate in the conversation about affordable housing. I can help, I can help attain that vision by working with partnering local organizations and better have the same commitment and visions like Common Ground, the Housing Working Group from Our Valley, Our Future. So I'll serve as an example of that involvement. I'm proud to call Wenatchee my home and I want others to continue to do the same.
Thank you. You have nine, about nine and a half minutes left, last two questions. When a sensitive matter comes before the city council, how do you go about making a decision on how to vote?
Uh, can you repeat the question, sorry?
Yeah. When a sensitive matter comes before the city council, how would you go about making a decision on how to vote?
I would be, I'd be resourceful. I would look at our leaders in our community. I would also look at what other, other cities have done in the past. I would try to be as informed as possible before making a decision. You know, I don't have to reinvent the wheel. I, I would, you know, I would do my research.
Thank you. So the last question is really just time for you to make any concluding comments. So please, please take any time, remaining time to make concluding comments.
Yeah, I, you know, I recognize that I may be a little more green on some of these issues, but I'm willing to work, put in the work to better understand it. I'm willing to visit with our department director, other staff and in the city for collaboration. You know, and so I thank you for the opportunity to do this online through all the technical troubles. And I appreciate your time. I'll support whatever decision you make and that is all.
Thank you, Armando. I'm going to hang up the phone and then we'll try to get you back on just the live feed like everyone else, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, now, we have a motion, probably 30 minutes.
Your Honor, I make a motion.
Excuse me, let me turn on my mic. Your Honor, I move for city council to convene in an executive session for a time period not to exceed 30 minutes with legal counsel present to evaluate the qualifications of candidates for appointment to elective office, RCW 42.30.1101H, and to consider the acquisition of real estate when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW 42.30.1101B. Further action is expected to be taken related to the appointment to the elective office. The council is not expected to take further action on the acquisition of real estate matter.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Cuevas for the city council to convene in an executive session for a time period not to exceed 30 minutes or 7:00 PM with legal counsel present to evaluate the qualifications of candidates for appointments to elective office, RCW 42.30.1101H, and to consider the acquisition of real estate when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW 42.30.1101B. Further action is expected to be taken related to the appointment of elective office. The council is not expected to take further action on the acquisition of real estate matter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back at 7:00.
It is cold.
Now that, now that we've got to this point, he can hear us.
So are we good with time to be out of the executive session at this time? Okay, so we're out of the executive session. We could have been there five days and still struggled. We are so fortunate to have community members here and it's unbelievable. It's very, it was just a hard, hard decision. And everybody in this room and Armando is incredible to listen to you guys. So I want to express that you guys are unbelievable and thank you so much. And please continue to help us throughout our process as the years go by.
Obviously, it was a very tough decision and we were trying to find the person who fit a hole in our council. And everybody had pieces that could have filled that role, so it was very tough to decide.
I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that they, you stepped up. It's not easy and I, thank you.
It was a tough choice coming to council and being here. I mean, that's, you guys did it. The decision, it wasn't easy to decide. I'm going to just say I'm going to respect the individual who got selected and we're going to work together as a team. There's no dislikes with anybody else, with the ones that didn't qualify or who qualified. We're all going to work together. We are a team and this is our city. We represent the city of Wenatchee. So the best of luck winner.
Yeah, hard decision anyway. Your Honor, I'll, I'll make a motion for appointment of Chelsea Uer to fill the vacant city council position for Wenatchee City Council District Two.
We have a motion by Councilmember Roger Seasian and second by Councilmember Hufaker for appointment of Chelsea Uer to fill the vacant city council position for Wenatchee City District, City Council District Two. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our meeting and it'll be hard to sleep tonight, but it'll be also great to know again how well we'll sleep with all the commitments that we have from everybody. So thank you guys very much. Have a good night.